of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through the doors to your right. Proceed to the right and down the stairs. If the hallway is blocked, exit to your left, down the hall, and down the stairs. Do not use the elevator, and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. Public comment will be heard after each at-work session item. If you plan to speak, please fill out a form on the table near the door you came in and give it to the city clerk. Following this work session, council will convene in a special meeting. This time, we'll pivot to our city administrator, Andy Kitzrow, for our resolution to approve a substantial amendment to PY 2023 CDBG annual allocation.
Wonderful. I also have Joe Ellen here and Muir, if we need them for any additional assistance. We came and spoke with you guys on June 3rd about a modification to amendment to the 2023 CDBG annual action plan. At that time, there were two major changes we were proposing. One was to move sidewalk funds earmarked for sidewalk reconstruction to Waterside Park. Another one was to move monies identified for Ann Street Village. One was partially for a case manager part-time, and part of that was for some Ann Street capital infrastructure. Those pots of money was supposed to go to Truitt Street. Upon further review and discussions, we have removed the request to transition any of the money from Ann Street Village at this time. We were able to figure out Truitt Street Community Center with a different pot of funding. I'll come to Ann Street in a second. So what's before you right now, it's just a modification to use the funding for Waterside Park. Looking at some additional estimates for the bathrooms and pavilions, we realized we didn't have enough funding there, so moving that money will allow us to finish that project. And then, at a future date, we'll look at some additional sidewalk improvements as necessary. So to wrap up that idea on Ann Street Village, some people may be interested. We had a strategic planning meeting today with our Housing and Homeless team, and we are looking at continuing down the RFP process. But until we have further decision points on what we want to do at Ann Street, we are not going to move any money from that project, and we'll revisit that at a later date. So right now, just looking at the Waterside funding, and that's what is detailed in their resolution as is.
I think that's a good step to make, is to, again, until we know what's going to happen with Ann Street, it makes sense to keep that pot of money there. And so, it's good that you all had a meeting to kind of discuss the RFPs. Is there any sort of, anything that you can share now, or that would be of information to the public or to council?
The RFP is, there is a scope on my desk. We've got a draft with our Director of Procurement. Our goal is to have this out on the street here in a week or so, maybe a couple of weeks. Talking with some community partners, United Way and Community Foundation are going to be part of the review process of the RFP to help us make sure that we have a robust review of who our partnership is. I think it's going to be a great opportunity to continue forward. We also had good news, that it looks like we're moving from 10 occupants to 15 this week at Ann Street, so we're starting to see an uptick. So we are well on our way to filling up Ann Street. But a very productive meeting, just in general, with Ann Street and us working forward with the plan there. And we might have identified, we were shortlisted people for overnight, kind of RA house manager, so we, you know, we're moving forward, and we heard people loud and clear a couple of weeks ago.
Absolutely. I don't have to shout for you to hear me loud and clear. Okay, that's good. But I think this is a good timing. Again, I know this wasn't motivation, but I know we have some persons coming, and we're doing a tour for MML with Ann Street. So this is good, again, this wasn't motivation to, but this is good. We can share some highlights and updates and some things that we're doing in the positive direction for Ann Street. So thank you, Andy, for hearing us loud and clear. Thank you, you know, Muir and all, Joe Ellen and all of you all, the players that be. Counsel, any questions thus far, or comments?
Thank you, thank you.
Good. Anything else?
Not on that topic specifically, no.
Okay. And did you, so you touched on Truitt Street, you're finding monies for that. The Waterside is continuing, and we're leaving you the money for Ann Street. Okay. Counsel? No further comments? Okay. And we have, there's, are there any public comments online, or?
I don't have any public comments specifically about this resolution online. We just have, Sean is the only person online, other than Pac.
Okay. Good. Oh, yeah, okay.
Mr. Kitzrow, the money that this was going to, the money that you had earmarked here for sidewalks, where were the sidewalks that were going to be improved or needed the money for work? Were they already identified, or was it just going to be a general fund?
Joe Ellen probably can give you some more detail on that. They had been identified. There's a rolling list of, there's certain neighborhoods that have it, and kind of this forever pot. So typically with CDBG funding, as we go through it annually to look at allocations, we have an opportunity. Essentially, what it's called is the sidewalk improvement kind of pot. So when there's an opportunity, we always have an opportunity to put more money to do some infill on our sidewalk infrastructure.
Yeah, I think it's important to point out, I think, the idea of moving the whole amount, that way we were sure we could finish up Waterside, and then any monies that are left over, we can couple that with the new CDBG money and any other money in the budget for sidewalks from this year to do more. So certainly want to do that, for sure, yeah.
I just didn't know how you identified which sidewalks were, but it's a roll, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Counsel? Consensus move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Next, we'll go over a budget amendment to purchase K-9 Hot and Pop system. Do we have, I don't see Chief here.
Let me, I...
Can pivot to Mr. Boda until we, if you want to?
Yeah, that'd be great, if you could.
Mr. Boda, ask for it to you for our short-term rentals, and you have an edict for us, so thank you.
This makes up for that time when I had a meeting with you, Andy, and you made me 15 minutes late on the meeting. Tell them we're even now. So we made a few changes. I met with a couple that spoke at the meeting, and so we had a really good meeting, went through a lot of items. And so essentially, we came down to, we're removing the liability insurance requirement, as most of the platforms either require you to do it anyway, or they offer it through their service. So did a little research on that, a little more research on that. The lead paint certification, had a conversation with MDE, and so MDE, even though the MDE and state legislation have two different definitions of what is short-term, their definition is 90 days or less for MDE. So that's when they begin to require a lead paint certification. So, and then the state itself and legislation identifies a short-term rental as 31 days or less. So which is where we made some of those adjustments in the legislation to reflect that. So, again, as I did discuss with them, you know, is, you know, if you did have situations where people were leasing for six months, then you would, by MDE standard, be required to have a lead paint inspection. So it was a good conversation, and I think we made some appropriate changes to the legislation. And again, simplified a few things, and, you know, less things for reporting and all of that. So, any questions?
No. My concerns were, again, those were, that were brought by the persons who actually have the short-term rentals and Airbnbs, I believe they have. And so, I know that they emailed me, and I'm glad, that was, I think, the first time that I've received an email. I wasn't a part of the meeting, so good, I'm glad that I was able to pass it along, and I trust, and I'm glad that you had that conversation at length. And I appreciate you also writing this in detail of what you changed and what was different there. I appreciate that from the director's standpoint. I'm not telling the other, urging the other directors to do that, but we like that from council, so thank you for that.
Again, you know, having sat on that side of the table, I know, I know oftentimes what you can look for. The other piece of it, when we get down, as we start to deploy this, both with this and OpenGov, I have a meeting with Communications on Thursday, and we will be having a robust educational program on communicating the changes and what's expected. We're actually meeting about multiple different things, because we have several things that we want to be ahead of and communicate any changes as an educational purpose. And there will be training sessions for both short-term rental owners, we're going to host those. We're going to create a tutorial from that, so that we'll place on our website. We're going to do the same thing for OpenGov, there'll be a training session for landlords and property managers, just as adding in as we go forward with this.
Perfect. Good. Counsel? Any questions or comments? Nope? Okay, good. Yeah, I asked all my questions last time, and they've been addressed, so thank you. Any questions, or any comments?
I was just going to say, I can do Dave's, if you want to circle back to this.
Great. All right, Counsel, we have consensus move this forward?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Boda.
I got another one on.
You do? Hold on, we're out of, oh, let's go and get you out of the way.
Unless the attorney's here.
Let's discuss the litter enforcement associated fines as well, let's get you.
So, yeah, this is more of a discussion, and probably more to put thinking cap on from council as well. We have a litter committee, that's kind of like an ad hoc committee that the mayor has put together, and it's got some very, a very robust volunteer program, that's kind of like its own initiative. Several people are doing a lot of good work in cleaning up in our community. You know, they're focusing on Peggy Neck Branch, where they've removed like tons of trash and 30-some tires.
200-some tires.
Yeah, it's, there's just a lot of good work that's being done, but there is some things in our code that we want to take a look at, and there's some areas that have some, you know, there is, it's an old piece of code, and it refers to stuff in the waterways, and so we want to make sure that we maybe tighten up some regulations on that as far as like fines. The county is involved in this committee as well, Jeff Merritt's on the committee, and he's out volunteering as well. They're having some discussion on their side to align our fines with their fines. So we're going to dig into that, if any ideas you have on that, but we're looking to make sure that our fines align with theirs. And then also, we're going to make sure that, the biggest contributor to some of the litter in the community is fast food. And some of it congregates in certain areas, and so that's a challenge, and there's some ideas floating out there. But, you know, that's, partly is an educational program that we need to implement, and they're going to be partnering with Wycomica County. But, you know, a piece of it, anything you do, there's, with funding and costs, and how do you fund a promotional, educational program? So there's some things on that that, down the road, we want to put together and come before you and talk about. And again, if any of you have any ideas or something, this is just something to kind of like start the conversation, get you thinking of ideas. So we don't have anything here. This is just a, kind of for us all to put our thinking caps on.
I think this is good for us. I mean, again, I'm copied on some of those emails that I get from those volunteers, and we thank them for their work, but it's sad to say, but that's not their job, and that, I mean, they're extending themselves, you know, a lot, and sometimes they're going after the next day or day or two, and the trash is collected back, and it's in, like you said, it's in the certain areas. And I think one of the things, and you touched on it, is our relationship with the county, so working with them, because again, it's, the first thing is always, well, who section of, or, you know, is this county or city? It's always like the first thing, and then it's like, figuring out, whereas, you know, again, it needs to be a partnership, because it's, our areas need to be kept clean, so.
Yeah, and the county is a part of this committee. So we have Jennifer Albaro, who's recycling with the county, and then we have from the landfill. And so we've worked out some agreements with, when we have this trash pickup, and we, and the city comes and picks up anything that the volunteers have done, they're not hitting us with tipping fees, and we're working some stuff out with the tires with them as well. So it's been a very good partnership with the county in this, and very good conversation going on. So there is cooperation between the city and the county, and we're very grateful for their, because litter and this issue, it does not know boundaries. And so they're very, a very big part of this. Field Ops is a part of this, Mike and Sam Ireland, Mike Dryden, they're not, they don't have the same name, Mike Dryden and Sam Ireland. And our department is a part of it. So we're looking at some stuff on, from the enforcement side, that we're trying to figure out, how do we go around this? Because the other issue with the volunteers is, again, they're putting in a lot of time to do this of their own, and we don't know how long that's sustainable.
Right.
And so that's kind of like, if that breaks up, or that goes down, it's just going to pick back up, and then who cleans it up? You know, and that's kind of like the issue that we face, because we want to make sure that there's a long-term concerted effort to address it.
Yeah, I think one of the things we're trying to do is figure out where the problem locations are, and identifying how we can solve those, kind of work down that list. And then, on the other side, we're trying to figure out ways where we can make it self-funding, where we don't have to bring it as a part of the budget, maybe we'll contribute, but the county tributes, but there's also another opponent that can contribute, because it is an ongoing problem. And some of those areas are like, just look like bad areas, we could beautify, and it become less of a possibility that people would pollute there, you know, so that's a solution.
Yes. Okay, good. Well, thank you. Hopefully, we hear back from you all soon. I don't want this to be a conversation, you know, since you brought it up, and now I'm going to put it on my list, so that means it's on our collective list.
Well, we want it on your pending list, and then we'll circle back in probably August, because we have another, we didn't have a meeting this month, we got a meeting next month, so I would say maybe we'll look at August to circle back. I'll get with Kim to see what's a good date.
Good.
The, one quick thing, there's litter, and then there's trash being dumped. I know that a mother and a son who do this on a regular basis, there's one particular area that seems people are just literally unloading truckloads. And as the mayor said, maybe that would help if we can find the target points that are really dumping spots.
Yeah, and we've been addressing a couple of those, as we've identified a couple areas, and in it, as we went to go look, we found some other things that were going on. So which brought up the waterways issues of people dumping trash into a waterway. Right now, it's just a $25 fine. You know, so I think that's something that we need to take a look at. And, you know, there was a couple businesses that, you know, one thing we have to turn over to the Health Department, so it was just as we went to go look, it, you know, and as we go and we look more, we're going to find more. And so that's kind of the, we just want to be prepared to be able to handle it appropriately.
Well, thank you, Mr. Boda.
Thank you.
Oh, did you, okay, yes, go ahead. Okay, no worries. Yes, fine, go ahead.
I believe you may have skipped, before I got to it, the short-term rentals for 4:45?
We went over it, yeah, we did.
I was here before 4:45, but anyway, just briefly on that, I've sent you information. That ordinance is entirely unnecessary. Short-term rentals are already covered by the city's rental code. Now, that might need to be tweaked here and there for some minor things like the lead paint, but by and large, it's already subject to regulation. Why overregulate something? Makes no sense. Put that in the can. Anyway, on the thing about the litter and trash, couple points. First of all, county executive Giordano has closed two of the recycling stations, one at the Civic Center, one at Sam's. Now they're wondering why there's trash on the road. I mean, go figure. So that's number one. Number two, in case you don't know, in the city, pardon me, in the county's FY25 plan, the trash tipping fee at the landfill is going up by almost 50%. Now that's going to ratchet down to everybody in the county, no matter whether they live in Salisbury or anywhere else, because that tipping fee will then regulate what the city has to charge for our trash services, our pickup, and what people outside in the rest of the county, what they pay to people like Seagull and whatever, who picks up their trash. So that's a very important matter. Now, I understand that the S has already hit the fan, I won't use the S-word, and there's probably going to be some change in that coming down the pike. So I would urge that the city be very involved in that. That was a special from Giordano, another one, just like the Shadow Hills matter, and Dan Cox, and other things. Thank you. That's all I've got to say about litter and trash.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
President, I've been in touch with the administration, and we're working, but we already get a discount, we're going to try and navigate. Our annual tipping fees are about $675 for our residential trash, so we're working through that, but we think we'll, it won't be as high as I think it initially intended, and I think we'll also get a discount from that. So I don't think it'll be that impactful. We're going to make, trying to make it a zero-sum game, but we'll see, so.
Well, good luck to you on that.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
Good. Anything else, Mr. Boda? Great, thank you so much. Yeah. All right. You want to go back to?
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
I just had to brief myself real quick. So the first one is the K-9 Hot and Pop.
Yes.
And we just recently purchased a new K-9 vehicle. So the Hot and Pop is essentially an alarm system that's in the K-9 vehicle, it regulates the internal temperature of the vehicle, so if there's an issue, it sets off an alarm. So if the K-9 poaches in there or something, it also tracks if there's low voltage, et cetera. So it just alerts us. Our other four vehicles that are K-9 units all have the same system. Luckily enough, Blue Hair and Agility Association was willing to donate the $3,500 to essentially cover most of the cost of installation, so this is just requesting to accept that donation, so we can move forward to a budget amendment to accept those funds and install that.
Any questions or comments from council?
I'll let him do the tougher one.
He just gave it in the brick room.
Any, any public comments on that one?
We just did the K-9 one, I think they're going to be okay with that. It's free money, they usually like.
We have consistent move that forward?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, now you can, if you want to, you want to take seat, we'll talk about the reappropriation of the co-responder grant funds, if you're ready. All right, good.
Absolutely. Again, my apologies.
No worries. You got it before I bang the gavel, so you're good. All right, we'll start with you, Chief.
All right. The co-responder, we have several grants, money sources to fund that project. One is some federal money that we applied for, that we still have another year or so to go on before that expires. We also have some private money through Target Corporation, that's still sitting with the city, that we can use towards that as well. What we're having an issue with is the state money. The state money expires in October, and we have been trying diligently to fill that position, and we just have not been able to do it. Now, we do have two candidates right now, they're in the final stages of, they're waiting for their last interview, basically is what we're doing. But the grant, with state grants, what we find is they won't, we can't get an extension on the money. So there's a possibility we'll be able to spend some of this money between now and when the person's hired in October, but we don't anticipate, it's 80, almost $85,000, 84.5, we're not going to be able to spend that money. So what we're doing is researching other sources, and the one thing we do need is our radios going forward. The radios we have will be reaching end of lay for the next several years. They are on the CIP, and we're trying to just chip away at that project. These radios we carry, this one right here, it's about $7,000. So they're extremely expensive, and this is an opportunity to repurpose the money for a need that we have, and still have monies available as we go forward to fund the co-responder project.
Thank you, Chief. Just to slow this down and ask, so again, I remember us talking about this position, which, again, I know you're excited about trying to actually fill this, and this was for that, I want to get the wording correct, mental, can you help me out with the officer? It was a, it was a mental health?
Professional, essentially like a social worker, so the co-responder model would be, this person would attend, or help intervene with stuff. I think we've had 38 applicants apply. We do have a rigorous background check, and some people who just didn't meet the qualifications. It has been more challenging than I think initially thought, so, you know, here we are six months later, and only have had two people get close to the finish line. Hopefully, fingers crossed, one of those people does end up getting that position. So a little bit of learning through the process of hiring, hasn't been for lack of trying, but hopefully we can find somebody and move forward. But again, if we can repurpose the funding that we're unable to spend for a different use, that would be great than send it back to the state. But we do know that we need the co-responder model, we're not abandoning that idea. It's very crucial, I think, to the way that we will police moving forward, but I hope to keep the funding local.
I'm just slowing it down for the public, again, just, I understand what you're saying. So again, what we're doing is, we still are going to hire for this position, we're just allocating the funds, because again, we don't want the grant funding to go back to the state. We're going to use those grant funds and find another source of funds for this 84.5 to fill the mental health professional.
Right, so the funds that we're repursuing are the state funds, and we do have, again, some federal, quite a bit of federal money that we applied for, we still have over a year left of, to be able to use those funds. And then the Target Corporation fund, so we're talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of about $150,000, $160,000 still available.
Okay.
And those, these grants, what we're finding is, are, we find them more prevalent in the system, be able to apply for, and we will continue to go after money to support that program. And there's also some city funds that are budgeted to go towards this project as well. So we do have a co-responder money that the city has set aside to cover some of the fringe and whatnot going forward. So we have multiple funding sources to make it happen.
Okay, good. I am only okay with approving this if we are still diligent in finding this mental health professional. That's my only?
Absolutely. We are committed to, and we realize the benefit in, number one, it allows our officers to concentrate on policing matters, and to be able to, to be able to have someone that's trained in this way to work with our officers is critical, because not only does it reduce our costs, it also provides a better product to our citizens as well.
Thank you, Chief. Questions?
You answered the question, which was how much we have available to hold on to still, so, yeah. We can fund both.
Seeing no public comments either here or online, Counsel, do we have consensus to approve?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Chief, and we look forward to you getting the radios and also us getting that mental health professional.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Yeah. Administrator Kitzrow, do we have special counsel on the line?
Yeah, we decided it's cheaper to keep him there than drive him all the way down. No, kidding aside, yes, Daniel is here.
Okay.
He's going to hop on. Meg, if you want to come up front too, that'd be great. Daniel, if you're there, you want to unmute yourself?
Talk starts.
All right, Daniel, can you give us a mic check? You just muted yourself, okay.
Is that, is that better?
Yep, we can hear you, you're good. All right, so what is included in the pack? I'm going to let Daniel and Megan do, Meg do miss the talking, but we have concluded our union negotiations with the three, with the three bargaining units, and what is included are those contracts for review. Specifically, we have been in touch with all three of you when it came to some of the funding requirements, specifically to wages, which were included in the budget, and some of the other additional benefits that were included in the budget. But we have, you know, this process has been going on for several months, I think we've kept you pretty much informed of the back and forth. We do have other representatives here from the fire department, you know, the police department, who are part of those negotiations. Each of the three negotiations had a different team that negotiated with the union representatives. Meg and myself were part of all of those, along with our special counsel. And then we had leadership from the PD for the negotiation with the FOP, leadership from the fire department for the IAFF, and then for general government, it was myself, Meg, and then also our benefits specialist, Mel, she was part of that too. And then again, of course, Dan. And then, as needed, we connected with our department heads to make sure that we were understanding the day-to-day rhythm of what they were doing and what the needs were, and we kept the mayor informed as best as possible on the different elements that were being negotiated. We think we've settled on a pretty good product for it being the first go-round. There'll always be things that we need to modify, and definitely further discussions to be had as this plays out. I think that's a good introduction, and Meg or Daniel, you're more than welcome to jump in on kind of next steps and what's happening.
So, at this point, what we would do is, hopefully you've had a chance to review all three of the contracts, or at least, you know, review them at some point. Are there any questions that you have specifically?
The only, so actually, we got, we have had a couple of questions from the public emailing us, is so if an employee does not want to participate in the union, are they still required to pay union dues?
No, they are not, so.
Did you just say that?
No.
Okay. Good.
I'm going to require it.
Sure, no, no, that's fine. No, 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 that's fine. The more, the more explanation is better. But yeah, so that was, that was a question, and it calls for concern. And also, I'm not sure if you're prepared to answer, but I know another question was how much this, or an estimate that this is gonna have an increase to the fiscal year, the city expenses, you know, year over year?
Yeah. Okay. That's a good question. So I'll hit that in a couple of ways. In the negotiation of most union negotiation contracts, wages and hours are typically the two biggest pieces in, you know, all other terms and conditions. Sometimes people argue for health benefit, retirement, et cetera. So in this negotiation specifically, one of the big pieces was wages, being the first time to make sure we had guaranteed wage increases proposed. So the difference between the mayor's budget and the adopted budget based off of that negotiation did increase the bottom line by a little over $1 million. So the mayor's budget did not include the $1 million additional that was negotiated in there. And then there's some other benefits that we had chosen to fund in the past that are now mandated to fund by the contract. We add all that together, it's about another $250,000 to $400,000, depending on kind of where we land on that. So 1.4-ish, a little bit more than that. And then, any additional legal costs that would come from using Dan as special counsel or additional needs from CBM that would come because of an arbitration or, you know, a finding that comes with the union, we may would have additional costs associated with that. And then, there is part of this contract where there will be an additional open for negotiation on wages for FY26's budget, so there'll be some dollars invested there. And then we have set it up, this is set up every two years, so the following year will go. It will not be as expensive as this year because this was the first contract, we built everything. So if nothing was to change between now and then, we would have a little bit of a cost associated with counsel and legal representation, but not the 175 we invested this year. So I would say, and I think it's acceptable to say, and I'll turn it over, is because we have a union negotiation that allows for wages to be negotiated, which is usually standard, if we find ourselves in a financial position or in a situation where we are not comfortable with even a COLA increase, that will be something that is still required to be negotiated or in an arbitration, which you all are familiar with some of our other private conversations. So how much is this gonna be? I'm not exactly sure. I know how much it'll cost us over the next couple of years, at least this next year, and then it'll be based off of whatever's negotiated. But again, with wages being a significant piece of that, it can go anywhere, you know, around that neighborhood and up, I'd say. Mayor, you want to jump?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, on that front, I mean, if you look at next year's, you know, '26 budget, we have a $3.5 million wall we need to jump over, which would typically be about a million, six-ish, million, eight-ish. So we're already gonna start in July, kind of ramping up for next year to see what we can do. Because with a flatter assessment and really no new revenues, we're gonna be a little bit of a pickle next year. So I'm just kind of getting prepared for that now. So I just want to make that aware, that we need to work together to figure out a way to collar maybe some of these expenses going forward, so.
I do wanna, you know, I do want to say one thing. I know we're talking about money and talking about doom and gloom, but, you know, this is a win for the employees. Absolutely. I know it is, we have some people here who are excited that this has happened. It is. It's going to keep us honest, keep us on the, on the straight and narrow on some of these things. It is all new, so we're gonna learn through the process, but it is something that the employees wanted, and I'm glad that they were able to advocate for themselves.
Absolutely.
And have something in place that protects us. I think we do a pretty good job here, but this now secures some of those things. The last comment I'll make is, even though you're not a paying member of the union, all union rights will be extended to everybody that falls within that bargaining unit. So we want to make sure, even though you're not paying it, don't feel comfortable paying it, you're still be treated as everybody within the union.
I think that's a good segue. I was actually gonna pivot, can you, between you and Dan, can you all highlight some of the things that you, that stood out, some of the wins that our employees and that we, you know, that you all, you being the front runners in this situation, highlight some of the things that were good, and then some, you know, knowing, going into, you know, next, next negotiations, so.
Some of the things that were wins, in my opinion, would be hiring practices, accrual rates for annual time were increased as well as the cap. So employees will be able to carry over more time, so they won't feel as much pressure to try and take time off, because that does get challenging in departments. Let's see.
Just some, so some of the, again, I think we just did a handbook rewrite recently that we thought was pretty good. This is also to solidify some of those decisions. So a lot of it was just, as they had proposed, they just wanted to guarantee some of the things that promises we had made. This essentially guarantees those through a contracted negotiation, so it safeguards them in a lot of those respects. But I think it's just, well, we saw some inconsistencies across different departments. This forces us to be more consistent across the board, which allows people, just even the hiring practices to the review practices, to understanding how we do evaluations and appraisals and move positions around. It gives everybody a little more parity to that and gives people a little bit more of an opportunity to have a, be part of that conversation, and this guarantees that they can be part of that conversation a little bit more so. So I think those are all wins. And I, you know, specifically with IAFF, I A F F and the F O P, they have been longstanding unions that now are recognized by the city, so I think those are wins for them specifically. And with Ask Me being here, I think they'll protect general government.
Good. Thank you. Dan, any highlights, or I definitely want to hear from you today, so anything you have to add or?
All right. So, and I want to apologize for not being there. I have to catch a flight this evening, otherwise I would certainly have been there, as I, you know, had the fortune and pleasure of being able to appear in front of you in person before. I would echo what Meg and Andy said. You know, I think any agreement, collective bargaining by definition is a collection of kind of, you know, gives and takes by both sides. And so I think, as Andy and Meg said, you know, from the union's perspective, I think, you know, they were able to contract, you know, make, made up a word contractualize, I've been using a lot lately, but, you know, put into a contract, a lot of the terms and conditions that have been in city policy. So now they're binding. You know, there's always concerns when you have a widespread operation that maybe a supervisor or manager over here is doing things differently than someone over there. This should promote some consistency or more consistency and uniformity, or at least certainly the perception, which is always important as well. So, you know, I think all of that is for the good. One thing I just wanted to circle back to, I think the first question, council president, that you were conveyed was about union dues. And Meg answered, and not, Meg was 100% correct, but I just wanted to elaborate on that. The fact that all of the employees in the bargaining units will not be required to pay dues, that's, I just wanted to be clear, that's not something that was the city's position, you know, that that outcome happened. That's law. That's the United States Supreme Court issued decision in 2018, which held, there's the Janus versus Ask Me decision, which held that government employees cannot be compelled to pay dues as a condition of employment, in contrast to private sector employees who can. So this was not a matter of policy or preference on our part. This was just compliance with the law. So that's why things turned out that way. But.
Well, thank you, Dan, and thank you for your help in guiding us. I know you were, I don't know if you would call yourself that, but you're considered an expert in that field, so thank you for helping guide us into this first realm of union negotiations and contracts. Council, again, I want to pivot to you. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gregg, I know you were here for the initial, that any comments that you want to regard into that?
I just want to say, I'm really glad to see us get through this. I know it was, it was rough-going points, but, you know, I'm really glad to see, see us finally make it through, and I know it'll get hopefully easier as time goes on. But we fought hard for this, and I'm really appreciative to the folks in the unions who have bared with this entire process, and hopefully it will get easier from here on out.
Absolutely. Good. Any public comments? Okay. Did you all fill out the, no? Okay. If you want to go up and then just make sure we fill out those forms, as we have a record of everything. Thank you.
I was also gonna ask one of the questions that was asked earlier, but even though the whole employees all receive the same benefits, but they don't necessarily receive union representation if they have a grievance, that's something different. That's different? I just wanted that clarification. Everybody received the same benefits, but representation on a grievance on an issue is something different?
No, they would still receive it.
Even if they're not paying dues?
Correct.
Okay.
The union by law has a duty to represent all employees in the bargaining unit fairly. It's a duty of fair representation. So that includes representation in the grievance process.
Dues or no dues?
Right.
So I guess, Dan, or, it's fine. I think there's another question kind of pending. So what is the purpose, I guess, in being a, a paying?
Do you remember?
Yes. Yes.
Well, if you want, so yes, you do have representation, but representation still costs money. So the collective aggregate of dues, the more money in the pot gives you more opportunities to negotiate a better favor, better position to have more representation, more hours, more opportunities to have discussion. So yes, you are afforded the same representation, but it also, all comes at a cost. So the bigger the pot of money, the more opportunities there are to have representation.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
I'd just like to get involved in this ball of wax that's been going back and forth here. The reason that the union is required to represent everyone in the bargaining group is because under law, the union has a monopoly in representation of that bargaining group. Nobody else can do it. And that's the background of that law that the attorney was just mentioning. Now, the Janus case that he mentioned, that's 2018. Before that, these unions could require, everybody who was in the bargaining unit had to pay the dues. Supreme Court struck that down under the First Amendment. Now, let's talk about what those dues go for, and we just heard Mr. Kitzro's version. He sounded like a union organizer. Of the ACME, and these are public figures, of the local council three, I believe it is, that's, that is our union rep here, or our local union, about half of their dues go to the national ACME, international it's called. And of those dues, much of them go for lobbying, particularly for political purposes. They backed Tom Perez in the Maryland gubernatorial election. They also backed McAuliffe in Virginia. They back a lot of liberal causes. I think the union should disclose to the members, and if it doesn't, the city should, what the dues go for. It's public information. There's a forum that has to be filled with the Department of Labor each year, and it's got information on it. The city should also tell the employees that they don't have to join the union. That's just transparency. Because the unions are gonna be on them, particularly ACME. That's, that's the active union here. The F O P and the IAFF, they're more or less trade, trade unions, not, whole lot different from the bar association. It's almost like a trade union. Agree with me on that? And, but I think just out of common, good practice and transparency, this should be made known to all members of these bargaining unions, bargaining groups, pardon me, particularly the general group that's being represented by ACME, or however that's pronounced. And I think you have a duty to your employees to do that. Another, just real quick, I think the code says that before you adopt any of these CBAs, there is supposed to be a written statement, I believe by Human Resources, about the costs. That was not in the briefing book. I don't know whether, are we gonna have to file a FOIA request to get that? Does it exist? And why, if it does, why wasn't it in the briefing book? It's called transparency. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do you have a public comment?
I do, but I didn't fill out the.
Okay. Yes. If you, yes. And if, just a reminder, if you want to fill out the form, so I know that we have public comment, but go ahead. Yes. Yes. Thank you so much.
So Paula Donalds, city taxpayer, AFA, Association of Flight Attendants, 31 years, union. And we paid our dues by, I don't know how you all are gonna set it up for non-paying union dues and paying union dues, or however you all just said it, but if you are paying union dues, is it coming out of their paycheck? Is it coming from a separate bill? And I kind of piggyback off of Mr. Taylor. It does, it's all political. It's basically political. It goes, your union dues go to certain things, and what about the one, you're all facing a lot of grievances, tons of grievances. Now, that's great that everyone came to an agreement, F O P, the fire department, and whoever else is in all, in all of this, but that still, I'm kind of wondering with Ms. Vaughn over here, either you pay your dues and you get representation, or you don't pay your dues, but you're still getting the same benefits. You're all setting yourselves up for a lot of grievances. I would be looking into this even further. So I was in the union 31 years. I know all about this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna pivot to you, Dan, just so you can underscore that, this was not a city decision. This was a federal, right, statute that we have to follow about the paying. So we, it's not our, can you just, can you just underscore that again, Dan?
All right. Yeah. So the legal framework that covers the airline industry is not the same that covers us. But, you know, the issue of dues obviously is of importance to the unions and to the employees they represent. It is really between them and the employees. The disclosures, what the dues go for, that is, that is a matter of the relationship between the employee and the union. It's, there's really no legal space for the employer to get involved there, other than if someone signs a form that authorizes the employer to withhold some of their paycheck for dues purposes, then that's, there's a mechanical role that the employer plays in that process. But, but really, outside of that, this is a matter between the members, you know, employees in the bargaining unit positions and the union.
Thank you. Meg, did you have any comments or anything you want to? Okay.
Yeah, the just last thing I wanted to add was that, you know, earlier, Andy made a comment that was doom and gloom, but, you know, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about how much it costs us in this first year. And I think we can do, accomplish both goals. I think we can appreciate and properly, you know, compensate our employees without potentially hyperextending the budget. Now, I jokingly during the budget period came up with this, you know, lollipop kid approach, everyone, everything, but at some point, we run out of cash. You know, we can only do but so much. So that's what I was always trying to point out relative to the negotiation, so.
Is it conceivable that none of the employees will pay dues?
No. There are folks that, well, I'm sure, yes.
Will or will not?
Will.
Okay. Yeah.
Just curious, Meg.
Ms. Vaughn, I know. Okay. I'll give you another minute up there, please. Yes. And then next, please fill out that form, just so I know. Just, you know, I like to dot my i's and cross my little t's. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
Vaughn, thank you. I just wondered, there isn't any potential of the city having to supplement or fees?
No, there is not. And again, just to kind of echo what Dan said, by us passing the labor code, we define the relationship between us and the opportunity for the employees to enter into a relationship with different unions, but our, as administration, our role in, and how we should interact in that space is very limited on purpose. So whether they pay, whether they, they don't, who pays, how many people pay, to a certain degree, it's not my business having to really get in the middle of that. We just need to know if there's a mechanic, mechanism that we need to do with, you know, cash withdrawals from paychecks so that we can, you know, pay the dues on their behalf, cash withdrawals from paychecks so that we can, you know, pay the dues on their behalf, et cetera. But, yeah, it's not really space for us to get involved in, and how much those are, et cetera, but we're not beholden to having to pay any of those shortfalls.
Okay, so, there is a, you've got to have a certain amount in order to sustain the union. Certain amount of buy-in?
Yes. Yes.
To be organized and to actually have a representation, to get to that point, there is, you know, thresholds to be able to actually enter into a union, to have a union representation, it's kind of outlined in the bylaws. Dan or Meg, if you want to.
Yeah, yeah, so, there's two separate issues, or two separate questions. One is, for the unions to have been brought in as the representatives for each of the three bargaining units, a majority of the employees in those bargaining units, or representation units, as the code uses that term, but it's a synonym, had to express the desire based on vote in favor of union representation. So, again, it has nothing to do with dues, or payments, or fees, or anything like that. That's if they wanted, if the majority of the police officers in the ranks that are covered by the code wanted to be represented by the general or police, they voted, and the majority did, and so, the FOP became the representative. Same for the IAFF bargaining unit, and same for the general government Actme unit. So, that's how they became represented, and that's what, under the Labor Code, enabled the bargaining process to actually occur, which we've gone through over the last several months to get to this point where we have agreements with all three of the unions. Again, the dues, that is 100% a matter of, it's a financial and membership relationship between the unions and the employees in the positions in the bargaining unit. The city has nothing to do with that. There's no fees that the city pays the unions, other than, there's no fees that the city pays the unions. The cities don't fund the unions. The city will remit money that employees voluntarily authorized to give to the unions as dues. That's the only role that the city plays there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make sure we have clarity on that. This is a big, and we said dues, and I want to make sure that the public knows that it's, it relates, but I don't think there's correlation, so we've underscored that. Thank you all for that. Again, pivoting back to you, counsel, any other questions, comments? Okay. We have consensus to move these resolutions forward?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Meg. And thank you, Daniel.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, and last but not least, Mr. Kitzro, we'll pivot to you for our last topic on our work session, on the Lot 10 subrecipient agreement.
Sure, and I'm going to have an assist over here. We are still, I mean, it is, we're going through a process still with subrecipient agreement. It is not so much the details of the agreement, which will be forthcoming. We're looking at standardizing that with all of our relationships with third parties who we, we have the pass-through of the funding from the state or the federal government, et cetera, for our subrecipient agreements. It's more of the details of the agreement and the funding of the allocation, and making sure we're on the same terms there, which there still continues to be some disagreement on. So, I'm going to stop there.
Yeah, that's essentially it. Yeah, I mean, we're ways apart in terms of the actual dollar amount and how we verify to set a budget. So, we've had multiple conversations about it. I called them again today, and we're still working through it, but, yeah.
Okay. I guess my question to you is, I guess, when does the, where do you draw the line and say, and just throw out, and just make a number and write the agreement up, and then just trust that, well, again, since we're coming with the agreement?
I think, Andy, I both talked about that, setting a dollar amount, saying, hey, we'll reimburse up to this, and we think that's way, way outside.
Sure.
And then if you can bring verifiable expenses, we'll reimburse.
Good. Because my only, again, only reason why I'm bringing it up and why I just wanted to have the discussion here is because same thing with, I think Chief underscored it earlier with the health, the mental health professional, again, he was, which we appreciate the chief, and as a director of the Police Department, he knew that, again, you don't want to give back state funding or federal funding. We're at the point here where this is, I think we're at $4 million, correct, that we have state funding? And I think what we don't want to do is give back, give that up, and I think we're at the timeline, so I just.
Yeah. Yeah, and I've had conversations with Deidre since, and so, we've been given the money. If we can't find a hole for it, we can re-purpose it, and we got to make a case, but, yeah, we can do it. But, we definitely want to make a provision for him if he wants to move forward with this project, for sure.
Good, okay. Because I just, I know that we don't want anything going into a lot that doesn't, we have a buy-in to that now, so.
Yeah, I got it.
Counsel, any other comments on that portion?
What are some of the snags that we're dealing with in this conversation?
Well, I think the primary snag is that he hasn't really been to the, through that process, the approval process, so we don't really know what the upgrades are. We can make a guesstimate as to what they might be, and then we can double that, and then say, okay, it certainly couldn't be more than this. But, you know, one of the challenges is that we just can't get him to agree to that approach. He wants things that are necessarily not out, that are outside of infrastructure costs, that are really developer expenses. And that's where we're having a hard time figuring out, you know, we just can't do that based on the grant language.
So, this is really between you and him. It's a direct, you all are seeing eye to eye with that right now.
Yeah.
So, that's where I say, we're, because I don't think, have we had, and I guess, as administrator, you've, at this table, you've been here the longest on this portion, city administrator, have we had this sort of law with subrecipient agreements before, where we haven't been able to compromise?
That's a tricky, tricky answer there.
Have we had it?
Yeah, no. Subrecipient agreements with pay-go cash, this is not already defined, in an agreement from the granting and awarding agency that details all of the details. This is a little bit different because it is an earmark that is a little bit looser with the interpretation of how the funding can go. Within the grant agreement and the language in there would live and exhibit that details how the individual developer would be reimbursed based off of line items that are eligible for reimbursement. Now, some of it is speculative right now because we are early on in development stages. You are a developer, you know, some of it is guesstimates. We can make a, I don't even call it a promise, but we can assume something is going to cost this amount of money and say we would remake eligible up to this amount of money, but as a reimbursement, we must see proof of expense. And if that proof doesn't exist, and someone thought that they were going to receive that funding on the back end, we would not be able to reimburse. So, we don't want somebody to think that they're going to get $4 million and end up being 2.5. Now, I think there, the flexibility may be in, is there gray, is there not? Is there an opportunity? What is infrastructure? What are site designs? And that is some of the pieces that I think are the final parts that.
Well, that's why I got the clarification from Deidre, because it was gray. So, she said no specifically. So, I've shared that email with developer, you know, it's wasn't like I'm just making this up. You know, so, we're limited.
And I guess it's kind of relating, just so that the public is aware and counseled as well, and I'm not, my whole push, one, I don't want to continue having this conversation with, in our whole term as elected officials, but also, I mean, right now, we have a say in what goes on in that lot, but we know that, you know, as the owner of that lot already, before our terms, he can decide something that we wouldn't have a buy-in to, correct?
Yeah, there's, if we give him $4 million, he moves forward, the project, he moves forward in the project. If he.
Even before that?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, if tomorrow.
We have sold that lot, and there are some restrictions on it, but we, there's no land possession agreement that says there is, there's a clawback or anything like that. It is his property through and through, and it is the decision that they have to do with what they want to.
So, again, given whatever the zoning code is for that, I'm not sure if that's the central business district or whatever, he can go build whatever's permitted, given the local zoning, and that's where I'm staying, and that's where my push is. I'm not saying one way or the other, but my push is, we have a say-so as the city of what that's going to be. And I, I'm at the point now where I'm, again, I've been talking about this since my first day as a city at the table. I've read the application, the same as the CDBG funding, and then we had the conversation of how to work it, and, but the funding and application that those pay-go funds, it was, these funds are used, to be used for a Lot 10 development of a hotel and conference center. So, that's, and that's where I'm confused, is why we're still having this conversation.
Well, specifically for infrastructure, design and infrastructure only. So, that was the part when we got into the granularity that we found that out. Originally, that's what people were saying, but in fact, that's not what the purpose of the grant was for. It's for design and infrastructure. So, we're around and around and around, but, yeah, I think there was a lot of salesman stuff in the room that conveyed to the developer maybe that they could do more, but in fact, the letter of the grants restricts it. So, we're sort of, you know, I would have structured the contract differently, and I would have handled it differently, but unfortunately, we are where we are, and I'm trying to do the best I can to navigate it out legally.
So, and that's where I'm trying, so, that's where I want to facilitate the conversation now, is I can't go back in time, neither can you.
Yeah, I know.
What are you saying? Because we've been talking about this round and round and round.
I think, I think the next step is to say, listen.
Hold on, let me just get it out. You've been talking about Lot 10, Lot 10, there's promises, well, by this day, well, the developer, can we just, what?
Yeah, I think the next step is to say, listen, this is where we're willing to allocate you, decide in the next 30 days, and let's go on, move on, 15, whatever. I've spoken to Dave Harkins as well, who's his partner, and I told him the exact same situation that I've told Nick. So, I think that the next step is to say, listen, you know, we're tired of, you know, budgets that are, you know, submitted that aren't consistent with what I've told you the grant was.
Sure.
So, we'll set this out there and give him a timeframe to respond.
And just to clarify that, it says City of Salisbury Infrastructure Improvements. So, just to, nothing about, it just says infrastructure improvements for, and the actual application says for the purposes of a hotel and convention center.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So, and I think, I mean, arguing semantics, I don't know, in my mind, I think it can be simple as, you know, as adults, we've got to decide, what do we do? And I just, I'm honestly, I do not want this item about a subrecipient agreement. It's been on the agendas time and time and time again, and I'm just, I just, I want there's some resolution, one way or the other. I'm not arguing either way. I just, I want there to be resolution. So, can we commit to some sort of timeline or some?
Well, and we've, we've given him several opportunities to come back and give us a legitimate, you know, within the confines of the grant, and hasn't done it. He keeps arguing for this additional money, which is not part of the purpose of the grant. So, I think the only way to do it at that point, to your point, is just to put a timeline out, says what we're willing to do, and you got to kind of decide and move forward.
Okay.
I think he will, I think he'll probably come to a timeline faster than we will.
I think that's the case as well, and that's, again, there could be a, I mean, Walmart, some sort of money generating thing that's going to be put there, because he's going to wipe his hands of it and say, I'm tired of dealing with this. It's going to be something that none of us want to be there. It's going to be, I don't know, Walmart, another Royal Farms, another Wawa, something of the sort of 7-Eleven, something that is not going to, so that's, I guess that's where my confusion, and I'm beating my head against.
Well, I'm beating my head against the wall, and we had, we'd done a better job of setting up the deal and orchestrating, we wouldn't have this. But it's not my fault, you know? I'm just trying to do what I'm supposed to do.
I know.
Okay, I know. And to your point, you know, in the conjunction with that conversation, is to say, hey, is there a way we can work this through to get a better result? I don't think his intent is to put us in a position where we get a strip mall, you know, blah, blah, blah. So, I think we probably can navigate that part, too.
Counsel?
I'm just, I'm very frustrated, as Council President has expressed, that we are continuing to have this conversation. I think that we need to just get down to it, and it sounds to me like one is saying potato and the other is saying potato, and you guys are saying the same word, just wording it differently. I think that the splitting of hairs on this will end up torpedoing it, and, as again, the Council President said, we're going to end up with something we do not want to see on that lot if we do not continue to, if we do not move this forward. So, you know, I'm not sure what the breakdown in communication is. I'm not sure what he's asking for to be, to be covered that isn't acceptable to you guys, but I am going to ask the administration to, please, let's get to the point, let's do this, because this is absolutely untenable. We cannot continue to kick the can down the road and continue to have these discussions and continue to say, oh, well, he said this and we want this. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it. I just, let's get it done. Just get it done.
Well, did you want to say something?
I was just going to say, I think you've decided that you are going to give him a timeline, you're going to get, you're going to give him expectations, correct? I think it needs to be above board, as the other two council members have said, but at the same time, we can't be held hostage by somebody if they're not getting their way. And so, by making sure that everything is put out there and you have a deadline, then he knows what's expected, and, again, it's something that initially may have been handled better than it has been handled, but we have what we have to deal with.
To not get myself in trouble, but to defend the person in the room, because I was the one who negotiated this conversation through the last previous administration, and three of the four people at this table were not here when this was all done. There is obligations the City of Salisbury made to the developer for $4 million for this project, whether the state put that in writing the right way or did not, and how it's restricted or not. There's $4 million obligated in last year's fiscal budget, another $2 million are anticipated for this year's budget that were not funded. Decision points were made by the developer to move forward based off of communications from this office, the previous mayor, this council, that the $4 million was guaranteed, we were moving this project forward. Money was spent invested on that project. Those decision points may have not been clear enough, were half-baked, weren't thought all the way through, but any transition from that, any departure from that, those decision points, the consequences will be, the conference center and hotel that the City of Salisbury wanted there will probably not happen, because the funding obligation will not be put into that project. Unless they choose to change their numbers, that is not ours for us to decide. So, when we make that statement or make that decision with that, the realness of that will be that that project may or may not happen, and the developer will have the opportunity because he owns the property, unlike an LDA, to sell it, to make it private, to do whatever he wants to. Hopefully, we can negotiate something, but, again, that is not for us to decide unilaterally.
And again, I want to preface, I'm not arguing one way or trying to defend the developer or person anyway, because, again, $4 million for a hotel, I mean, I don't have the specs on it, but I'm in the multifamily world. $4 million is not, he can't go spend that on whatever. It's going to go towards the improvements of that building. I mean, that's going to be at least a, what, 50 to 60 million dollar?
The number was 35, but, you know.
For just the first phase.
Yeah. Well, that's, and that's part of the challenge, too. Initially, they were going to give them 6 million, which they got, they cut back 2 million. But, but, it was for apartment complex, parking garage, and the hotel and conference center. So, it was a bigger project to start with. Now, listen, so, I've been in banker for 25 years, and I've done a lot of different development deals, and I've, this concept of putting grants for infrastructure is a new thing in the last five to 10 years of trying to, economic development stuff. But, I talked to some developer, my friends that are all around the state, and when I told them this story, they laughed at me. They laughed, like, what? They, I mean, literally laughed on the, so, what I'm saying is, there's restrictions on these grants for a reason. You know, it's not, they're not to be equity injections into a private project, it's to assist in the things that make a project easier, but not, not an injection of equity. So, you know, it's not, this isn't a new concept, I know, so, but, so, believe me, I want to see great things happen with Lot 10, and I hope that's what we're going to end up with. But, I've got to live within the confines of the grant, because there's a form on the front of that thing that says, it's a penalty of perjury, that we're signing off saying this is what the money was used for.
Sure.
And there were people on this council that said, oh, no, no, you don't have any obligation to how that grant is dispersed, and that's just not true. So, listen, I'm trying to do my best. I've worked with him, I've sat down with him, I've talked to him, talked to his partner. We're trying to work it through. Believe me, we're confident, we want it to go the right way.
And I just, can we, injection of equity, because that, and again, I'm a developer, some of that means, but can you just, what you, can you explain what that means in your?
It goes to expenses that would typically be an onsite contribution by the builder or the developer. So, he was, you know, I don't want to get into the particulars, but he was asking for things that were non-infrastructure or infrastructure-related documents, so, and, you know, that's all I'll say.
Last comment I'd like to make, again, I don't like having conversations with people who aren't in the room to be able to defend their decisions. I think if we extended an offer to the July 1 work session to allow the developer, developer partner, whoever, to come talk about this, and we may have resolution at that point, but we can have it in a work session and wrap this up.
That's fine by me. Kim, can you make sure that it goes on the, perfect?
No.
That'll go with you, Mayor?
Yeah, sure.
Did you, what is going?
I think you asked something out.
Yes, okay.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Taylor, please. I think I. I think public comments will be heard after each work session, and if you plan to speak, please fill out a form on the table near the door you came in and give it to the city clerk. That's just, that's, that's how it's, that's just so I know who, you know.
Mine just says, public comments will be heard after each of the following items, colon.
If you plan to speak, please fill out a form on the table near the door you came in and give it to the city clerk, that's what I read out every, every work session and legislative session.
Anyway, I'm here, I can speak.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I just, I think it's time to realize that almost everybody in Salisbury that has heard about this hotel convention center thinks it's a bad idea and it should be changed to something else. Now, the concern about them doing a 7-Eleven or something like that, I think is a little bit off the wall, but they could do apartments, they could do affordable housing there, it's almost three acres, they could do over 100 units at 40 per acre, so there's lots of other things. I think we ought to look at the state money and figure if we can use it for something else there, something that would really be helpful for the city, not a hotel, we don't need a hotel convention center, particularly at that location, it just doesn't make sense. But there could be other things that would be beneficial to everyone. So that's, I think, what we ought to be talking about, and not just giving them more money. And as a taxpayer, I've got to ask, the city has already sold them this property, almost three acres, for about $26,000 an acre, that's a giveaway. Now they want more giveaway, when does it stop? How much money do you keep giving people? I mean, you know, give me some money, if you're going to give, you've got money to give away, I'll take some. So I mean, I think we need to get realistic about this, about what we want to do, and just forget about what Jake Day put us in with this particular property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, and just to, again, as a affordable housing, that's my day-to-day, I'm a proponent of it, again, that's, these funds should not, and I don't think, can't be allocated just to do anything in the city or do anything we want to do, there are, there are some stipulations with these monies, we can't just move money back, it's not in our savings account to do X, Y, and Z. But if the developer or some developer did do, want to do a multifamily affordable, they will be coming to us for pilots or anything like that, and I know that there have been discussions, and again, that's a giveaway for a developer, so again, if, you can't say on one side and not say on the other side, so I just wanted to underscore that. Ms. Siggers?
Apologies, I have not read all of the information, so I'm asking out of ignorance, but I just want some clarification. I'm just wondering, are those funds dedicated solely to this project, or if it's for infrastructure, can it be used for other areas of concern for infrastructure? I have a list I can submit of concerns.
Is that your only, I want to make sure you get all your time, is that your only question?
Well, this is the one I can remember at the moment, but I, I had a number of questions during your discussion, and I can appreciate your clarity. One of the concerns I have is that the mayor has just stepped into this process, and while there were those previously who negotiated this, this matter, and it was their vision, and I don't know that it's necessarily not the mayor's vision, but I don't hear necessarily that he's had the opportunity to just get a grip of the reins and, and, you know, get a hold of the situation.
Thank you.
So I'm hoping that, because I don't want you out of your frustration to just do something that we'll live to regret, and I kind of feel like, Mr. Taylor, I don't necessarily see the need for that project, but I'm just wondering if those funds can be reallocated for infrastructure somewhere else, because I can submit a list of concerns.
I'm sure we all could. Thank you, Ms. Siggers, and as a former councilperson and council president, I know you appreciate the relationship between the administration and council, and when council does approve and pass through things to be done, again, this was a little bit before my time, but I believe this was one of the things that we approved as council to do the Lot 10 agreement.
Yep.
So that, that's where the law is, again, I'm not saying I'm one way or the other, but council didn't approve for this to happen, and as a former council president, you know the relation, that when council does approve things, and that's where we are right now. But if you want to answer the question about, yes, yes.
To answer, to answer a question, pardon, there was a Deirdre Bell who was with DGAS, and so she did the evaluation of the grant and told me what it could be used for, but in the event that we had excess funds, we can repurpose it, as long as it sits in the same kind of category, in how we have to use it at the first site first, so we, but then we'd have to use the difference somewhere else, if we had a similar infrastructure need or could make a case, and that's a fair, it was a two-step process. Louis Luna gave me the protocol on how to handle that part, so we could use it elsewhere. We don't have to necessarily send it back to the state.
Ms. Bratton?
My next?
Yes, you are. Yes, yes, you did, thank you, I'm right here, Ms. Bratton.
I don't. Following the rules, that's, that item that's missing from your contract thing should have been done, too, because that was in the rules. Hi, Lynn Bratton, curly hair, it's getting longer. I wasn't going to talk tonight, but you know what, I just couldn't sit here and watch everybody get beat up. Rules are written for a reason, whatever those rules are, whether it's density, whether it's the sub recipient thing, whether it's the grant monies, whatever those rules are, whether it's the ordinances that need to have some kind of something added to them before you can vote on, whatever it is, confounded if the rules are there, let's follow them. And I agree with Mr. Sheel, we don't need to be bullied into a, into a situation where it's this or that. There is information that our mayor is trying to get to the bottom of, so that when he signs off on something, our city will not be liable for a bad decision that's illegal. Give that time, give it time to work, and the person who keeps asking you to do it, based on some decision point, I think that was the term you used, Mr. Kitzrow, that decision point isn't the grant, the rules, and those are the rules that this person in the state of Maryland is saying you have to follow, and if you don't follow them, then that's illegal. That's all I have to say, we need to follow the rules, and we need to take a timeout on development, and we need to just kind of take some breath and reassess what's happening in our city until we get out of some of the fiscal responsibilities that the mayor is kind of alluding to coming down the pike. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I don't think I have anything. Anything from area online?
Cancel. Any other discussion or comments?
Mayor, are you okay with the June, was it June 1st or 15th? Is that okay with you, or would you like us to move that?
I might have ever stepped on that, sorry.
I'm sorry, July.
I got excited, we hadn't discussed that, so we can circle back to you.
Let's see how this goes, and we'll see if we can, we'll make.
So then, I move that, again, I don't think we should have this on the agenda until either the developer's here to answer or what have you, I do not want to.
I didn't want to have it on the agenda today, because we hadn't resolved it.
Again, in my mind, I'm not trying to, and I think, I guess the perception is, I'm not trying to rush it, I've just been trying to just, I had this, I have a list at, on my, every device, there's a list, and since I've been, what was it, this October 2nd of 2023, that's when I was sworn in, and so I'm not trying to push anything, but there are, there's just, there's things, and I like updates, and so sometimes the update is, we're working on it, but that, in my mind, it's not an update, I just want concrete things, so sometimes the only update I can, is to put it on here and just say, hey, what's happened since the last time? I'm not trying to rush it, that's not the case.
Got it.
I just want, I want the best, but what I don't want, I know, and maybe that's, it's to think of, but I don't want something that none of us want to be there, and I know that the developer, he is at its wits' end, so I just want, I'm urging you, I'm not, this is my, is to just, please find a resolution, and I'm only talking to you because I, I'm not talking to him this time, find a resolution, I'm talking to you, because I trust that you'll find one.
Yeah, okay.
So, thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate that.
Next time we have this on here, I know we'll be talking about it in fully, so.
Good, thanks.
Thank you so much. And with that, we'll actually pivot to you for your administration comments, if you have any.
Great festival this past weekend.
Yes.
I was unable to attend, but I could hear it from the neighborhood, and people were having a good time.
Yes.
And I know you guys may comment on it, some of you were there, and then we've got hoops on the app coming downtown this upcoming weekend, so June is jam-packed with a lot of fun, exciting events, also with school out, I think today, other than opening day of, the fountain was the busiest Unity Square has been, with kids having a grand old time, so glad to see that fully operational on these hot days, so, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kitzrow. Mr. Mayor?
Just enjoying the good weather and enjoying the pickleball courts at Harmon Field, big tournament this weekend for Izzy DiZarno's Foundation, which was great, successful, which was proud to do that, and that's pretty much it, so.
Good, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman DeShiel?
I have a shout-out for the Little Leagues. That's where I was last weekend, we'll be there for the next three weekends, you want to see some fun entertainment, four innings, that's it, and you have these young kids just vying for their little recognition, so, and thank you for those that come out to help us do our job for all of you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeShiel. Councilwoman Gregory?
Yeah, so, join the council president, he, I showed up and he tossed a walkie-talkie at me and put me to work, but first I want to acknowledge Mayor Todd Knock, who's in the audience tonight.
From the city of Pocomoke.
From the city of Pocomoke, yes.
The second-best city on the Maryland's largest shore.
Anyway, good to see you, Todd, glad, glad to have you here. Yeah, the Juneteenth was, was, there was a really good crowd, there were lots of great vendors, lots of great folks participating in the parade, but I would really like to remind folks that the next couple of weeks, I'm looking at the forecast right now, in the 10-day, there is one day where it has it under 80 or 90 degrees, and it's 89 degrees. So please, 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 stay hydrated, use sunscreen if you're like me, I've spent an inadvisable amount of time out in the garden this weekend, so I am dealing with the sunburn, even with the sunscreen. But yeah, just take care of yourself, make sure you're staying hydrated, staying cool, and I think that's about it for me today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Yes, thank you, Mayor Knock, for coming to the city of Salisbury, we appreciate you. He's paying the remarks, but I went down to one of their meetings a couple months ago and saw that, I like to see other cities interact, and he has, he has some folks down there who, who love the city as well, so we appreciate that. Also want to give my condolences to one of our former council vice president, Gary, and I'm going to, his.
Comages, yeah.
Comages, yes, he passed away, so I want to definitely give our thoughts and condolences and our heartfelt gratitude to his, to his family as a former councilperson, so we're thinking of you.
I went today, and we gave them accommodations, so that was good, so framed, it was nice.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very nice.
Yes, we appreciate that. As was stated, yes, this Saturday, this past Saturday, was the Eastern Shore Juneteenth Festival and Parade, and I'm a proud board member of that, so I helped kick it off, and it was, it was a good time, it was a wonderful event, I, Councilwoman Gregory was, she was a lone soldier there, but she represented the city council in the parade, and I, for the first time in my life, I got sunburned, so I, there was a lesson that I learned, so not to be in eight hours of direct sunlight without wearing some sort of sunscreen, I, I think it's, you know, Juneteenth, the celebration of, you know, Black liberation, but as a person who does have some hue, I'm not immune to sunburn, so I learned a lesson that day, but.
I'll spend my 100, let's be it.
But had fun, so, and also, this Wednesday is, is Juneteenth, and again, declared a federal holiday, but we as council declared it Juneteenth Day in the city of Salisbury, so do some research, have, there's a couple of events going on at Billie Jean Jackson Park, there, I believe some people are going to go repaint the Black Lives Matter sidewalk, so there's something to do, I think it's on tomorrow evening, and then the Billie Jean Jackson, there's a celebration there from 12 to 4 at the Jackson Park on, on Lake Street, so there are a couple of things to do to celebrate Juneteenth, and I think that's all I have, so at this time, this work session is now adjourned, and I'll call the special meeting to order, I can have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor of adopting the special meeting agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
Same.
And the chair votes aye. Mr. Kitzro, we'll pivot to you for resolution number 3352, can I have a motion in a second to approve resolution number 3352 for first reading?
So moved.
Second?
Ashley, you sure you don't want to? I mean, I've been doing a lot of talking today. Now, these aren't too bad. All right, resolution number 3352, resolution of the council of the city of Salisbury to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the city and the America Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Maryland Council III, ASME, LFO-CIO, effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement, whereas the negotiating teams representing the city of Salisbury and the American Foundation, excuse me, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Maryland Council III, ASME, AFL-CIO, and as ASME, who represents employees of the city have culminated negotiations on a new collective bargaining agreement covering two years from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026, and whereas a copy of that agreement is attached as Exhibit A, and whereas the membership of ASME voted in favor of ratifying the agreement, and whereas the city director of finance has submitted to the city council a fiscal impact note addressing at a minimum the annual cost of the agreement to the city and how the costs of the agreement are to be funded, and whereas the city's management team and ASME requested that the funds necessary to implement the agreement be approved by the council, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows, section one, the council ratifies the collective bargaining agreement effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026, between the city and ASME, and authorizes the mayor to sign the agreement attached hereto incorporated herein as Exhibit A. The next three sections are boilerplate.
All those in favor of resolution number 3352, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Can I have a motion in a second to approve resolution number 3353 for first reading?
So moved.
You have to second.
Second, oh, sorry, second.
There's only three of you tonight.
I have to be sweating back there, I don't know.
It's like, man.
I'm glad we can have fun with it. Resolution number 3353, a resolution of the council of the city of Salisbury to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 111, effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement, whereas the negotiating team representing the city of Salisbury and the Fraternal Order of Police, FOP Lodge 111, who represents employees of the Salisbury Police Department, have culminated negotiations on a new collective bargaining agreement covering two years from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026, and whereas a copy of that agreement is attached as Exhibit A, and whereas the membership of FOP Lodge 111 voted in favor of ratifying the agreement, and whereas the city director of finance has submitted to the city council a fiscal impact note addressing at a minimum the annual cost of the agreement to the city and how the costs of the agreement are to be funded, and whereas the city's management team in the FOP Lodge 111 requests that the funds necessary to implement the agreement be approved by the council, and now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows, section one, the council ratified the collective bargaining agreement effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026, between the city and the FOP Lodge 111, and authorizes the mayor to sign the agreement and attach hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit A. Thank you.
All those in favor of resolution number 3353, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Can I have a motion in a second to approve resolution number 3354 for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution number 3354, resolution of the council of the city of Salisbury to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the city and then International Association of Firefighters, Local 4246, ALF-CIO, effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026, and authorizing the mayor to sign that agreement, whereas the negotiating team representing the city of Salisbury and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 4246, AFL-CIO, IAFF Local 4246, who represents employees of the city, excuse me, of Salisbury Fire Department, have culminated negotiations on a new collective bargaining agreement covering two years from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026, and whereas a copy of that agreement is attached as Exhibit A, and whereas the membership of IAFF Local 4246 voted in favor of ratifying the agreement, and whereas the city director of finance has submitted to the city council a fiscal impact note addressing at a minimum the annual cost of the agreement to the city and how the costs of the agreement are to be funded, and whereas the city's management team and the IAFF Local 4246 request that the funds necessary to implement the agreement be approved by council, and now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows, section one, the council ratifies the collective bargaining agreement effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026, between the city, IAFF Local 4246, and authorizes the mayor to sign the agreement attached hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit A. Thank you.
All those in favor of resolution number 3354, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. This time, this special meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.